Called to order the January 26, 2021, meeting of the Bristol, Virginia City Council. Would you please join with me in a moment in silent prayer? Please stand and join with me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with everything does its part.
I appreciate everyone coming out tonight for our meeting and those that are joining us online. Couple of things under the mayor's minute and if anybody else has anything to add. I think it was last week, the Red Cross had let me know through one of the partnerships they do with the fire department, that a house that had caught on fire back in December, because they partner with the fire department to provide smoke detectors and the fire department will come and put those in the houses, that, you know, there was a family that, you know, was spared any loss of life or anything from a fire. So it's good to let the community know that those programs exist and anyone that needs a fire or a smoke alarm can go to the fire department. Or if you have one and you just have difficulty installing it, I know the chief and the other members of the fire department would be happy to help with that. And I saw the other day that WCYB had also run a story on this. So some of y'all may have seen that, but I did want to bring it to people's attention. Again, just to remind people, you know, a lot of people are starting to get vaccinations. That's the community. I've had a lot of people ask questions. I would always refer them to Mount Rogers, the Mount Rogers Health website. You can find that information online. They keep the most up-to-date information as to where you can go to get a vaccine and encourage people to do that and continue to do other things that's going to keep our community safe, our schools open. They just returned to class in person this week and our businesses open, which is by now, most people know, social distancing, wearing a mask and washing your hands. Anybody have anything else?
I do have one thing. One of the, one of the boards that I serve on for the city is the District Three Governmental Cooperative, which deals with services for seniors, whether that be helping them with costs they might have, or housing, or food. During, during the, since COVID started, they've had to eliminate some of their programs for bringing people in to prepare meals for them. And they've been doing a lot of food delivery, but it had been, it had been prepackaged cold food, you know, cold sandwiches. Recently, District Three partnered with Food City and they're providing vouchers now for senior citizens who participate in these programs to actually get a hot meal from the Food City deli every week, which I think is great and a good step. And so I just want to thank them for their work, because I know we have a lot of seniors in Bristol who take, take part in that program. So I want to thank District Three and I also want to thank Food City for being a part of this.
Thank you, Mr. Eads. Anybody else? Okay, we'll move to item B, City Manager comments.
Yeah, just a couple of comments. I want to follow up in regards to what the mayor had mentioned about COVID. We've all been reading that there are a couple of different variations of COVID out there now. We have the UK strain and the South African strain. It appears that those strains are a little more contagious than what the normal COVID strain we have had is. I just read a report this afternoon that, I think, there are agencies or at least one person at the higher levels of government recommending that we start wearing two masks. There are other, another group has said that even normal everyday activities are, puts you to more increase of catching COVID than what we have been used to. So we are still in COVID-19, even though people are getting vaccinated. I don't think that scientists yet know whether or not the vaccines, how well they protect against the new strains of COVID, but it's something that we still have to remind ourselves. We are in a COVID environment and especially as we go into budget season and have more meetings, we need to remember that as we get together in close quarters. And the public needs to remember that as you're trying to get back to normal routines. We're still not there yet. We've got a long ways to go and we just need to be cognizant of that. The second thing is just a quick update on the landfill. SCS engineers were on site last week, making sure that the materials that we have are adequate for the things that need to be done at the landfill. They've had to order some more materials. Those materials will be here early next week, we anticipate. And we have a crew coming in from SCS out of Texas, should be here Monday or Tuesday to really begin a lot of the work. A lot of the work they did this past week had to do with engineering design and finalizing some plans on that engineering design work. But we are slowly moving forward and hopefully we'll have some of those issues resolved for residents in the very near future.
Thank you, Mr. Eads. Item number C, matters to be presented by members of the public non-agenda items. No one had signed up, but anyone that would like to speak is free to come up and do so. I will, for those, I know there are a few here, as well as some listening online, about the, the item on the agenda that comes later about the landfill discussion. Mr. Eads gave an update as to what was done previously and really that item is not a continuation of the discussion we had last time, but more just discussion of the operations in general, not about the odor or anything like that. But someone doesn't want to make a comment now, would be the time to do that. Mr. Farnum?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, gentlemen of the council and staff. This is in, as an extension of the City Manager's comments, want to mention that there is now an antimicrobial mask available. It's the one that I'm wearing under this one. This is actually antimicrobial. You can get those from acteev.com. These are zinc impregnated. They're made with a zinc-impregnated nylon. And I know, I'm familiar with the masks and their materials because they are made by a sister company of Universal Fibers located in North Carolina. The polymer that goes into it is American-made, then our sister company extrudes it into fiber and then it's made into cloth by another US company. If you look at the seller's websites, they're normally listed as being made in Mexico, but that's for the final stitching, because they couldn't find a company in the US that would actually do it. But everything else is done in the United States. The masks are a little pricier than the normal ones you would find. They're $15 each, but they are washable, they're machine washable, and they don't just block the virus, they kill it. So that's, that is an option for anyone so interested. Thank you.
Thank you for that information, Mr. Farnum. Anybody else? Okay, we'll move to item D, adoption of the agenda.
Before we adopt the agenda, I would like to, I'd like to move the closed session items E1, 2, and 3 to the, to the front of the agenda so that they'd be handled before the regular agenda. And with that change, I'd move that we adopt it.
We have a motion, we have a second.
Second.
Clerk, call the roll.
Farnum.
Yes.
Mumpower.
Yes.
Osborne.
Yes.
Wingard.
No.
Hartley.
Yes. Okay. Now we will move to, I guess, item D, keep the others in.
About, I'm sorry, I didn't know that we had finished with D. I'm sorry. The adoption of the agenda, I just have one comment. The second item on the consent agenda, budget transfer within the general fund. The wording under the staff recommendation, transfer budget amounts due to realized savings from the Washington County Revenue Sharing Department to the City Manager Department to fund a pro forma model. It should also read "and/or a jail analysis report prepared by Davenport and Company, LLC", the city's financial advisors. None of the accounts changed, none of the dollar amounts changed. I inadvertently left off "and jail and/or jail analysis report" in that description and I just wanted to clarify that for everyone.
Thank you, Ms. Bradlin.
Thank you.
Okay, so we move to, pardon me, ahead of the regular agenda, the closed session. Do I have a motion to enter into closed session pursuant to Virginia Code 2.2-3711.A1, Code of Virginia 1950 is amended, discussion, consideration, or interviews of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, discipline, or resignation of specific public officers, appointees, or employees of any public body personnel?
I move that we enter into closed session for the reasons stated.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, Councilman Osborne, second. Vice Mayor Farnum, clerk, call the roll.
Farnum.
Yes.
Mumpower.
Yes.
Osborne.
Yes.
Wingard.
No.
Hartley.
Yes.
By roll call vote, council members will certify that only business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements and specified in the motion to convene the executive session where discussed. Clerk, please call the roll.
Farnum.
Yes.
Mumpower.
Yes.
Osborne.
Yes.
Wingard.
Abstain.
Hartley.
Yes.
It's time our entertainer motion to accept the recommendation of the City Manager is presented in closed session.
I move to accept the recommendation as presented.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Clerk, please call the roll.
Farnum.
Yes.
Mumpower.
Yes.
Osborne.
Yes.
Wingard.
Abstain.
Hartley.
Yes.
Okay, move to the regular agenda. Supplemental appropriation of $730,000, $730,323. Ms. Bradlin?
Mayor's, mayor and members of council, this is an additional appropriation in the amount of $730,323 comprised of the items listed on the screen. Fire Department State Reimbursements, $2,788. Fire Department Special Ops Tech Rescue Grant, $60,000. Also with the Fire Department Special Ops Hazmat Grant of $24,000. Debt service for the general fund, the DSS building payoff from prior year balance that was discussed at the last council meeting. The budget amendment needed is $527,532 for a total of $614,320 with the general fund. The CDBG fund has an additional CARES funding appropriation of $116,003. That was presented by Ms. Tolton at the November 24th. The action plan for that was presented the November 24th, 2020 council meeting and was approved by council for a total additional appropriation of $730,323 and staff recommends that the supplemental appropriation be approved as listed.
Thank you, Ms. Bradlin. If anyone had signed up for a comment, if anyone has one, the public. All right, what's the pleasure, council?
I move to approve the supplemental appropriation as presented.
Second.
Okay, have a motion and a second. Any discussion? One, I think you answered this question, Ms. Bradlin, but the CARES Act money, that was from previous, not what Congress had done right at the end of the year, correct?
Right, I, if...
Since we met in November, this wasn't part of their most recent thing.
No, this was, the action plan was presented in November.
So there's a potential that there might be additional funds more down the road?
Yes, sir.
Any other discussion? There are none. Clerk, call the roll.
Farnum.
Yes.
Mumpower.
Yes.
Osborne.
Yes.
Wingard.
Yes.
Hartley.
Yes.
All right, item number two, budget calendar discussion. Mr. Eads?
All right, council, last meeting, I was going to say last week, two weeks ago, we had a discussion about the budget calendar and moving forward. And so what we've done, we've gone back in and we've put in three additional workshops. We have a workshop on February the 25th, one on March the 2nd, one on March the 6th. And what, I know Councilman Wingard had asked for a discussion in April. I think what we need to do, let's work through those three here in the spring and as we continue to move forward through this. I know Councilman Wingard asked for a discussion item on the landfill later in April. We're going to discuss this landfill moving forward at every council meeting. So let's see what we can get through before we start scheduling something that far out. As I mentioned earlier, we're still in COVID-19. We have more strains of COVID-19 that are easily transmissible than what we have been. So I think we have to be cognizant of that and be able to adjust when necessary. So this is the proposed plan right now. At the March 6 meeting, we would have the solid waste landfill discussion. On February 25th and March 2nd, we have several different items that were still up in the air as to how we'll move through with that depending on how budget planning goes. But typically, we talk about the debt and revenue in one meeting. Another meeting, we typically talk about salaries and benefits and capital projects. And then in another meeting, we talk about significant expenditures. So we will discuss those as we move through this spring. Questions, comments?
Yeah, I can already, I looked at the calendar. I've got a, I already a couple of conflicts on here, just want to let you know. So the 25th, if you could move that to the 22nd, I could be here, because you know, I'm coming in for the council anyway, but I got a work conflict on the 25th.
Is that on Monday?
Tuesday, I think?
Yes, it's a Monday. It's the Monday before the council.
So if you can move the 25th to the 22nd, I'm good. If you can move March 2nd to the 8th, I'm good. Otherwise, I'm probably going to have a problem with those two dates.
Council.
Just a side note, February 22nd, 3rd, 5th, whichever day, we, we're going to have a baby the morning of the February 23rd, we're supposed to, unless baby comes early. So I can call in, I may be at the Bristol Regional Medical Center during that time, if that's okay with everyone.
No, you have to miss that, I'm sorry.
And let us look at the, let us look at the flow of this, as to how that's going to happen and changing those dates and what that does, because the 22nd really moves things up quicker than what we anticipated. But we'll get back with you no later than tomorrow evening or Thursday on those dates.
Well, let's see. Let me kind of look one more time. What's the first council meeting in March? Is that the?
That's the 9th.
Yes, that's already the 8th.
Did you, did you hear my comment?
No, I missed it.
Maybe in the labor and delivery room at the Bristol Regional Medical Center around that time, but hey, even if we're pushing, I'm going to call in, if that's okay with you.
I'll have to, I'll, I'll, I'll believe that when I see it or hear it.
I won't be here.
Because I don't know if your wife is going to allow that, but we'll see. That may be your last council meeting.
That may be.
You've served your city well, Anthony, we appreciate it.
I think it's a legitimate excuse. So...
It's on the Tennessee side. That's a statistic on their side if that happens.
So I guess, you know, what's been added is the three workshops you mentioned and you're still look at dates and specific topics for those and then get back to us.
Right, I mean, there's a, there's a flow as we go through this budget process of what we think we can have done by certain time. And we need to just look, go back and look and see what we think we can have done in time to start changing this calendar around.
Well, yeah, that's fine. I know, you know, for example, salary benefits, we need to kind of have some sense of what the insurance might be before we talk about that. So you don't want to get too far ahead. Seems usually you have that by mid-March or April somewhere in there. We always have that discussion, but it'd be kind of moot to have it without knowing that.
Oh, and the other thing to note is we've moved the adoption of the budget up. We, in the previous calendar, we had a month between the budget presentation and the first reading, so we've now moved that up so that it's, you've got the budget presentation and the first reading of the ordinance is May the 11th and the second reading is May 25th. Previously, it'd been like May 25th and June 8th, I think. And that gives us time in June if necessary. All right?
You know, I think, like anything, as you mentioned, you know, the uncertainty that things might come up between now and then, it's good you built some flexibility in.
I think we've got to have flexibility. I know people want COVID over with. I know people are starting to feel like things are normal, that vaccines are rolling out, but I can tell you just from within the past week here in the city, we've had four employees with COVID. So it's still out there. It's not, it's not going away anytime soon. All right, we can go on and move into the next if council wishes. Budget goal discussion.
Anything else? Okay, we'll move to item three, budget goal discussion.
Tonight, council is, want to have a discussion in regards to each of your budget goals as we move forward. We've done this every year and it's important that we continue to do this so that we know where council wants to move. I have attempted with each of these to do a cost, a cost benefit analysis. However, some of the goals were broad that did not allow me to nail things down and one set of goals allowed me to kind of nail things down so we can see where we're at. Councilman, or Mayor Hartley wants to maintain operations during the ongoing pandemic by ensuring essential government functions, public safety, education, collection, disposal, and street maintenance through conservative estimates of revenue based on actual data during the past year, adopting a structurally balanced budget, ensuring positions are adequately staffed and supported, and maintaining sufficient reserves to allow flexibility should circumstances change dramatically. Goal two, short-term needs. As revenues allow, make strategic investments that increase revenues such as tourism initiatives and operational efficiencies such as budgeting for needed capital items and investments in city employees. Three, position the city, or long-term issues, is position the city for success in post-pandemic environment by addressing long-term financial issues such as solid waste disposal funds, city jails, school facilities, and debt payments that will enable the city to make quick progress once the current pandemic eases, revenues begin to return to normal, and in anticipation of future growth. Based on these broad goals, I was unavailable to have a cost analysis. Vice Mayor Anthony Farnum said reduce the real estate tax rate, prioritize pay raises for our city employees, increase funding to our school system, prioritize our capital needs and capital fund, a new school plan, vehicles, et cetera. It could, that could be a $4 cost analysis if you just increased raises by $1 for all employees amongst 300 and some employees, if you increase funding to the school by a dollar. So really tough to do an analysis on that. Councilman Osborne, ensure employees are paid fairly and competitively for their work. Also prepare for the upcoming state mandated minimum wage increase. Continue to have a plan to acquire needed big-ticket items, public safety vehicles, building repairs, new school construction. Have a plan to transition to energy-efficient vehicles when leases end and energy-efficient streetlights when possible. No cuts to public safety. Reduce the real estate taxes to offset increase in property assessments. Reassess the budget for IT and make sure the city stays on the forefront of security and technology. Prepare for increased casino revenue. Look to have a specific plan for paying down city debt and funding needed big-ticket items. And it's difficult to do an analysis there. Councilman Mumpower, align the upcoming fiscal year expenses with the last 24 months of average fiscal year revenues. COVID has lowered revenue streams, lodging and milt tax specifically, and this budget cycle should recognize the fact that by lowering expenses accordingly, the future outlook on revenues and revenue recovery are still unpredictable and it's risky to assume full recovery. Budget in this upcoming fiscal year should reverse the trend we had reported to us by the CFO where the year-over-year increase in the unassigned fund balance has significantly turned into more negative. The plot or graph from 2016 to 18 is much different than 19 and 20. This trend should be reversed or it is clear we are moving back toward the prior years of expenses outpacing our ability to increase funds where we can save money. Establish a capital plan that moves more toward cash payment of assets, needs versus liability, financing or lease agreements, with a capital return of an investment required before any purchase or lease. Show new and used equipment. The ROI sheet should show full project financing, 75% cash down and 100% cash payment. All capital is shown against fund balances and current metrics to verify finance policies and metrics. If the asset plan were to be approved, A, before and after, look at how the city stands against the finance policies. Budget for city attorney, a minimum of $100,000 to $125,000. Accrual of fund or fund established for the required landfill closure costs of both landfills, active and closed, $750,000 for the closed one and $250,000 for the active. Increase landfill charges for out-of-Bristol-City metro, i.e. commercial haulers, move them to the market rate and reduce residential rates. Reduce real estate taxes with a plan to go from the current rate per 100 over the next three years, approximately 3.3 cents per year over the next three budget cycles. Establish a new school fund and place all excess funds from the prior year budget and 25% of the unassigned fund balance into this fund each year on the June 30th. Goal is to raise $5 to $8 million over the next five budget cycles and use 5% of U2's real estate taxes for placement into this fund. Increase advertising charge on the city transit by 10%. Increase the cigarette tax rate another 25%. Lower the mills tax by 5%. Lower the lodging tax by 5%. Eliminate all third-party budgeted monies until organizations submit and get approved by council. Align item expense form showing specifically how the money they are asking for will be spent and a following year-end requirement where they show the invoices that match those requested expenses, audited by the CFO and shown in the annual audit as a separate section of the audit. Reduce the Commonwealth Attorney budget by 15%. Reduce Parks and Rec budget by 10%. Reduce the transit expenses by 10% and establish a casino gaming account and expense account. So based on these, I was able to go through our current budget. This is based on our current numbers and do an analysis of how this would impact the city's budget. You can see on the left-hand side, these proposals would increase the city revenue by $472,000 roughly. And I have those items on the left outlined. So number nine, increase the advertising charge on the city transit by 18%. Our current line item's $18,000 for advertising, so that would increase by $1,800. Increase the cigarette tax... Increase the cigarette tax rate another 25%. I'm getting younger and I can't see, but I think it's 118,750 dollars. The current cigarette tax brings in a revenue of roughly 475,000 a year, and that's 25% of that. Thirteen is, uh, third parties. It's 59,750 that would be eliminated from, um, going to outside agencies. Fourteen is 134,821 dollars would be removed from the Commonwealth Attorney account or from their, uh, budget. 109,000 would be removed from Parks and Rec and 47,000, uh, for, almost 48,000 dollar in reduction in transit expenses. On increasing expenses or decreasing revenue, item number four was budget for a city attorney. I just put in 125,000 dollars is what Councilman Mumpower had suggested as a minimum. A million dollars, that is towards, uh, funding closure and post-closure costs at the landfill. Number six, I do not have a real number on, but I do have a real number based on the fact that when we attempted to increase commercial hauler rates, uh, within the past 18 months, a locality chose to go to a different landfill and that reduced our revenue at the landfill by 400,000 dollars. Number seven, uh, reduce the real estate taxes. That would be about 412,000 dollars a year in reduction in real estate taxes for, to our revenue. Number five is 625,000 dollars. That is, uh, 5% of the real estate taxes going towards, uh, the school fund. Number 11 is lowering the mills tax. That would reduce the revenue by 210,000 dollars. Number 12 is the lodging tax. That would reduce the revenue by 63,750. So we'd have a reduction in revenue of about 2.8 million dollars. Overall, it'd be a 2.3 million dollar, um, reduction in the city budget. So that was council goals, uh, that you all have submitted.
Alright.
And we can move on to the next item unless there's a discussion.
Any questions, any, any discussion? Alright, I appreciate you, uh, asking us that and compiling the information as we move forward. It's helpful to see what everybody's thinking about.
Well, it's helpful for us as, as we move forward into the budget process, knowing what council's goals are and, uh, try and incorporate the goals of council into the budget as well.
Well, that's all fine and dandy. I'm not opposed, you know, everybody, you know, needs to, uh, have their input and everything. I submitted nothing. And, uh, cause the bottom line is, if it ain't broke, don't fix it. That's my philosophy. We just came through a COVID year when the world's freaking out. I mean, there's things we all want to do. We'd all like to see things change, you know, and blah, blah, blah. But the bottom line is, we just came through a COVID year in this past fiscal that put over 3 million dollars unexpectedly that we was not anticipating in our general fund. We just spent over 500,000 dollars tonight to pay off a building. You know, if things are not broke, don't try to reinvent the wheel. We need to stay the course and continue doing what we're doing. And not have any grand ideas right now that's gonna get us back upside down. So, that's my input on it. If we have another year, this fiscal year, like we had last year, the financial footing of this city is gonna be phenomenal with a casino opening the following year. And then all these grand ideas can come up and be talked about and discussed. We do need new schools. We need a new jail. We need new infrastructure. We need to maintain our properties better. And we all realize that. And we're gonna get there. We just gotta have patience and we gotta keep doing what we're doing and take small steps towards goals instead of a grand illusion. I appreciate the offer. Last year, you done the same thing. You, you make the offer every year to submit what our goals are.
And we really try to incorporate those goals of council into these budgets. We really do. And, um, I would be remiss if I didn't, uh, say that we wouldn't have been in the shape we were in this past year if it wasn't for our department heads when on the March 13th at about 8:15 that morning, I sent an email to all department heads, basically stop spending. Um, and they did everything in their power to operate within the limitations that I set. And didn't ask questions. I mean, they suffered through March through June uh, knowing that they were gonna be operating under a different set of conditions than they had ever been used to operating under. And by doing what they needed to do and continue to operate and still offer the services we offer, uh, my hat's off to those guys. I mean, they did a tremendous job. And it's, uh, those are the people who really deserve our thanks.
But anyway, the city is finally on the right track and we need to stay the course.
Any other, thank you, Councilman Wingard. Uh, any other comments? Yeah, I, I'll just, you know, kind of piggyback off of that. Like last year was very, we went into this very uncertain and there's still not a lot of certainty out there this year. So, uh, you know, we need to keep that in the back of our minds as we go through this process. And I know y'all will, uh, do that. I have no doubt. As, as you prepare a budget, you'll, you'll keep that in your, in, in your planning as well, so.
And, and I'm, I'm gonna say it. I'm gonna tell department heads. I'm gonna tell council. I want to remind the public. I know people want COVID-19 to be over with as much as anybody. We are still not out of COVID-19. And my guess is we're gonna be dealing with COVID-19 through early 2022. And we better prepare for it and plan for it and just learn to deal with it and suck it up for another year or so. Until they can narrow down how these vaccines are gonna work with these new strands that are popping up, I don't think there's any certainty with any of the vaccines that people have already received or are going to receive. So we have to keep that in the back of our mind. And, and I'll say this. The numbers that Ballot is sending out on a daily basis or daily scorecard, people can go look at it on Ballot's health, on their website. I think we're under 19% as far as positivity rate. We've also got to remember, a lot of these places have switched from testing to vaccination, which means less people are getting tested. So that may be one of the reasons in the decrease in positivity rate. I don't think we know what the true positivity rate is in our region right now. But thankfully, uh, to the, to Ballot's help, Sullivan County Health Department, our Mount Rogers Health Department, they have done a tremendous job with the information and the tools that they have to start rolling out this vaccine. So my hat's off to those folks as well.
Well, hopefully, we're on the downside of this.
I hope so too.
Because if you look, we, we not be testing as much right now. But if you look at the hospital, hospital rates, you know, how many people's in the hospital, how many's in the ICU, how many's on ventilators?
It's going down.
They're going down. So, you know, that, that's the real, that's the real issue. Cause some people get COVID and, and don't have an issue.
I just wanna be, I wanna be cautiously optimistic.
It's affecting everybody differently. So it, it's the hospitalization numbers and ICU numbers and ventilator numbers to me is the major indicator.
And I agree with you. I mean, we're half the number of people in ICUs today than we were two and a half, three weeks ago.
Exactly. So hopefully, the trend, the tide has turned and we're on the downhill side of it. And, uh, maybe everybody can, uh, start enjoying life again, cause it's good.
Well, and, and one thing I think will help this year over last year, and y'all did a phenomenal job in, in kind of putting on the brakes and switching gears very quickly cause I know you'd about finished your budget and when all this really hit and trying to figure out what the impact would be. Is at least now you have, uh, some sense, some, some historical data and, and you, both locally and you can look at what they're projecting at state or national level and see if those trend lines remain the same. But you, you, you have something to look back on at least a year to really kind of see what the impact was. I know some of those, uh, may not quite have been as bad as we thought, but that doesn't mean going forward. It, it's still, hopefully it improved, but it could get worse. We just don't know. And, and again, that's what I think we still have to keep that in our minds as we prepare. Alright, if there's no further comment, we can move to item number four, the landfill discussion.
Okay, um, we all know the landfill is its own beast, to say the least. And, um, this has been a topic of discussion since October of 2017. We have looked at this thing. I've looked at it. Council's looked at it in chambers. We've had engineers look at it. I know there's been two council members and some others look at it in this room over here to my right. And we are in a position where we've got to come up with a solution. Uh, over the past two years, I've put out two separate RFPs to either lease or sell the landfill. The closest I came was this past year. I worked with nine months for, with a company to come up with a solution for them to either buy or lease the landfill. Uh, we had numerous discussions with their engineer. They were here on site. Um, they looked at our finances. They did everything that they could to, in good faith, attempt to purchase our landfill. We started putting a plan together. They go to, uh, Department of Environmental Quality. And basically, we're told it's gonna be a two-year approval process. And you're probably gonna have to spend, and I don't think this came from DEQ, but this is based on their estimates. They would probably have to spend a million and a half dollars at least to go through that approval process. And based on the current, um, political environment, based on, um, the likelihood of that getting approved, their plan getting approved, they chose to pull out, I think, right before Christmas or maybe right before Thanksgiving. I can't remember the exact date of that. But, uh, you know, I informed council that they were no longer, um, interested in purchasing a landfill. Not because they didn't think that it was an opportunity for them. It's just, there's a lot of hurdles that they would have to overcome before they could truly move forward with purchasing that landfill. And right now is not the perfect time for them to do that. So, um, it's now back on us to come up with a solution to the landfill. We know, um, that the landfill has financial issues. It's had financial issues since day one. It currently, I think, has about 33 million dollars in debt associated with it. Roughly one-third of the solid waste disposal fund budget is, goes to pay debt. Imagine if we didn't have to send 2.3, 2.5 million dollars every year to pay that debt. What that budget would look like and what we could do for our citizens. I've said this before and I'm gonna say it again. It's imperative that we as staff know what council wants to discuss so we can be prepared to discuss those items, one in detail with you all and two on two. And then, uh, two, in public and have intelligent answers to your questions. So earlier today, um, I know Councilman Wingard had some questions. I think I've answered some of those. I don't know if you've seen your emails yet, but, um, we did send you the information on the amount of brush that's being accepted at the landfill. In regards to drilling to the bottom of the landfill, one of your questions was, are we drilling to the bottom to get the water out of the landfill? The answer is yes, and we're already doing that as well. Uh, we do have a sump in the very bottom of the landfill that is pulling the leachate out. Uh, this new plan that we have with SCS is putting another sump in at the southern end of the landfill to continue to pull water out of the landfill. And, uh, we anticipate that sump probably being in within three to four weeks so we can get that installed um, in this SCS engineering design. So I'm gonna open it up to what do you all need from us so that we can provide the information to you all to help you all make decisions in regards to the landfill.
Well, I'll go ahead and start. I think, I think the landfill, you know, is a very complex problem. You know, it's a big landfill. It's been there a long time. It's got lo, lots of cost issues. It got, it's got lots of environmental issues. And so the best way to tackle a big, complex problem is start to just look, look at the facts. So I think what we need to do is break, break this complex problem up into a few bite-sized pieces. And, um, I think the first piece is just come in here and brief us on just the general specifics of the landfill. How many acres? How old is it? You know, how big is it? How many cubic feet has it filled up? What's left? You know, just, you know, a general description like you generally describe your home or your property. Just tell us, you know, what do we have? How many buildings? What are they used for? Just educate us on the general description of the landfill. And once we get through that and get our questions answered, I think we move into, let's, let's review the collection and disposal separately. Let's don't intertwine them, cause it's easy to get confused between collection and disposal. So then we start looking at the revenues, you know, the dollars. So come in and educate us on the collection side, dollars, expenses, you know, everything that goes into that roll-up. And then as soon as we get through collection, take us down the disposal path. Show us that revenue and collection, right? Debt has to be part of that, right? So now we've absorbed all the dollars, kind of got a general description, right? And then, then throw all the curveballs at us, all the things that are, um, issues with the landfill that might be environmental-related, um, complaints from the community, you know, things that have come up over, not just this year, but maybe over the last five, seven years that, that either have been partially addressed or not fully addressed, which includes the gas production and, you know, all the water, um, rain drainage and everything you guys have been talking about. So take us through those one at a time. And then last thing, let's talk about options. And let's just, let's just stay open-minded and let's start, based on all the facts we've just absorbed, let's start laying down potential options of what we could do. Not necessarily we'll do it, but what we could do. You know, one option is always do nothing, right?
We're not doing that.
You know, I'm, I'm saying one option is always do nothing, right? But you look at every option, right? And, and so you look at option one, sell the landfill, okay? Let's talk about that. Option two, let's split up operations of landfill to places. Let's talk about that. And let's give some due diligence to, to each of the viable options, you know, whether they might seem crazy or not. Let's talk about each one. What's the merits, advantages, disadvantages of each of the options? And then I think we're gonna be probably close at that point to have a pretty educated discussion about what we really need to consider seriously. And then, and then we can decide whether we want a little bit more detailed analysis from an outside group or whether we think we've got enough to, to make a good decision. But, so that's my recommendation, say over the next, you know, two to three months. We just step through each one of those, one at a time. Whatever makes sense from a timing standpoint, you know, can't stay in here three hours a night, but you know, something that's reasonably, that we could absorb in an hour, you know? So that's my input.
Well, my input on this landfill is it needs to be a never-ending subject until we fully understand every micro detail about this landfill. And ask the questions why and find the answers. Last year around this time, I made a recommendation that we start a war room and get the heads involved and never stop talking about this subject until we come up with viable solutions. The answer's out there. We just gotta be willing to put the time in and the energy and get the heads together and figure this out. This landfill is dragging this city down at a rapid rate. And we need to get our arms wrapped around this and get it under control. No person has the answer for. this and get it under control. No person has the answer for that landfill as we speak. But when you start talking about the subject and you start getting the facts and you start debating and throwing mud on the wall and see what sticks and ask the stupid questions and get the answers, we're not going to make any progress on this, gentlemen. We have got to start this conversation and never stop it until we figure out the best avenue for this landfill. We've got more debt on it than we can pay, and sooner or later, closure's coming. And we better be ready for it. We've not closed the old landfill. Why? We can't afford to.
Well, and we're also using that as cover for our current landfill, so there's a reason it hadn't been closed.
I understand that, but that's, I understand that. But if you've got the letter tomorrow to close it, we're in trouble. We better get our heads wrapped around this, and the only way we're going to do it is to start talking about it and start having meeting after meeting after meeting and get all hands on deck and get this landfill under control. Because the current rate we're going right now, it's winning, guys. We losing this one. We better get out in front of it. I'm going to make the recommendation again that got shot down last year. I want to start the war room back. I want every hand on deck on this one. We can find the solution. But if we just talk about it once here and there throughout the year, guess what? It's the same old thing. It ain't never going to change, ever. But once you get dedicated minds behind it and get the council, get city leadership, the landfill leadership, and get everybody behind it, we'll find the answers. We may not like them, but we'll find them.
I think I might just need some clarification. Like Mr. Wingard's talking about, it might be helpful, you know, he's talking about finding the answers, if we break out what answers we're looking for, you know, because I think if we take this all as one big issue, you know, it's a giant problem, so I don't know that we're going to be able to fix everything as one large problem. So if we break out the specific three or four or five issues, kind of like we've heard, debt, environmental issues, especially in relation to the smell that's coming out of it now, I think that'd be helpful. I will say, I appreciate that you brought in some experts. I think it's our third meeting in a row that we've talked about this, maybe, maybe four, that you brought in some experts.
We're going to talk about it for 26 meetings this year.
I believe you. But I appreciate that you brought in SCS and Draper Aiden and all, you know, we heard from them. We heard from, I believe, Mr. McCullough last time. So I appreciate that because those are the type of experts we need to be hearing from, you know, those are the type of minds that we do need to be listening to the recommendation because they deal with landfills every day, you know. In the case of SCS and Draper Aiden, they deal with landfills all over the country, so they are the experts on this. So I appreciate that we've had access to them. But I think it'd be good if you broke down the problems into smaller categories, maybe we could take it, you know, like they say, like the cat ate the grindstone a little bit at a time.
I have something that I need answered. So I like the idea of what Mr. Mumpower said. We kind of look at the big picture. We get our heads wrapped around it. You know, one thing that could, I think, be maybe a solution is, you know, we look at the rate at which we're putting in trash, and we know what that is. And, you know, they say if you do something over and over and you expect a different result, that's the definition of insanity. So we know the rate of trash that's going in, and we've kind of briefly talked about, well, maybe there's two options. Maybe we put more trash in. We have more commercial haulers. We try to charge them a bit higher rate, and we get the landfill full and close it sooner. And then the other option is less commercial haulers, so we operate the landfill for a longer period of time with just our city trash. And the curveballs with that, you know, we don't have to fund the closure and post-closure as much. We don't have to buy the liner as frequently. So I think, you know, maybe a better solution of what we've been doing for the past few decades could be one of those options. And whether it's putting more trash in or less trash in, you know, I don't know the numbers of what's best, but, I mean, that could be a whole topic in itself, what the pros and cons are for doing each one of those.
And I kind of like Mr. Wingard's idea. I mean, I'm used to war rooms and big problems, you know, have a room, put up everything on the wall. And there's nothing wrong with this one, to let this chamber be the war room. You know, we could have the nice factual data things that we go through each week put up in here because the community needs to see it too, you know, instead of being, you know, behind closed doors if they don't get back there. So let's figure out how to make this a war room. We could put stuff up on each TV screen. We can talk about it while we're looking at the data, and everybody can absorb it. So that's effective, because it gets everybody's input.
And I'm all fine with the consultants and everything, but hey, it's a fact. Even consultants are wrong at times. You know, that's factual. They may be the experts, but I'm talking about getting the feet on the ground. People that's working at that landfill day in, day out, they know it better than anybody. This beast is unique in the fact that it's an old quarry. How many of these experts out there have dealt with quarry landfills? That's a good question, because if they're dealing with average landfills, they know nothing about this one. This is a unique beast in itself. We need to get everybody involved, from the boots on the ground up there to council, to city management. It ain't going to hurt to get experts' opinions, but that don't mean it's factual. They have known to be wrong.
I don't disagree with that, and I think that, I think that's why it'll be helpful if we break this up into several problems that we look at. Because, you know, for instance, the environmental issues, people who work in the landfill will know firsthand because they're there every day, what it smells like.
Well, let's talk about the environmental issues real quick. What you have to remember is, we report to the DEQ on a routine basis. The DEQ inspects us on a routine basis. As far as I know, at least during my time here, we have not had any issues with environmental problems with that landfill, except for the complaints that we've been receiving since October, November. And we're now under an odor control management plan. So I don't want the public to think that we've got environmental issues out here at this landfill, because from DEQ inspections, from the reports we have to turn in, from even the recent air samples we have taken, we're not seeing anything that would alert us. And trust me, I know I've been out there when the complaints are there. I know what the citizens are telling us. I know what they're smelling. But those air samples have not shown us that what the issue is. So when we start throwing around the word environmental, we have to be very careful, because we have not had any environmental issues with that landfill.
Let me retract it and just rephrase it. The current issues with the smell, I think, would be good. People who are there every day, you know, who smell every day.
And, you know, I think we heard from SCS at the last meeting, you know, I think a lot of the issue has to do with the amount of rainwater that we have had over the past three years. Typically, this area averages 45 inches of rain a year. Over the past three years, we're over 60 inches of rain. So there's a 25% increase in the amount of water that's going into that landfill than has been going in in years past. So I think that's one issue. In regards to this being a rock quarry landfill, you're exactly right. There's probably not many experts that have dealt with a rock quarry landfill. At the same time, this landfill is not that different than other landfills. It operates under the same general basis. If you go out and you put a landfill on a flat 100-acre site, it's got a liner sitting on the ground, you put trash on it, you cover it every day. Our landfill just happens to have a liner that encapsulates it as you go up. It's not flat. The other issue is, it's the low point of the water table. So all the groundwater runs underneath that landfill. To say it's different in the fact that it is a quarry landfill, but to say that it's different than how, I mean, trash decomposes at that landfill the same way it decomposes in any other landfill. And it's different, but it's not so different that an expert can't come up with some reasonable answer to the problems.
You know, and in regards to that, I will say, you know, a quick search of SCS Engineering's website, their vice president is listed as a national expert in landfills and quarries and hydrogeological issues with the two. So, you know, as far as listening to experts, and they can be wrong, you know, if I'm bleeding out, I would prefer an expert who's a doctor to tell me why I'm bleeding out, not just get some people's opinion on why I'm bleeding out. So, I mean, there should be some extra weight with listening to experts, you know, especially if we're paying these people money for this.
Okay. I don't recall saying anything about environmental, if I did.
I don't think it was you. I think it was others.
You know, because to my knowledge, we have zero environmental issues.
Right.
Okay. The bottom line is, the complaint is, it's stinking.
Right.
Well, I've walked through my kitchen many times and my trash can stinks, and I've had to take it out to the trash, dump the trash can. I mean, trash has an odor to it, okay? So we're never, ever going to get rid of all the odor out of that trash, out of that landfill. But can we do things to minimize that? Absolutely, we can, and we are, and we're moving forward with that, okay? But our problem with that landfill does not lie in environmental issues. Our problem with that landfill in, the issues there is this massive debt that's hanging out there over us, the cost of operating this landfill, the amount of revenue that we're generating from this landfill. There's a lot of issues here. And how quickly we're filling it up versus if we cut back on the haulers and we took a whole nother look at this landfill at every angle. If we fill it up as quick as we can, make all the money we can, what does that look like in the end? Because the rate we're going right now is not working. We're still subsidizing that landfill. We need to do something. We've got to do something. So we need to look at every scenario. Fill it up quick, get the thing closed, get it paid off, blah, blah, blah. What's it look like? Get rid of the haulers. Make it just a city-only landfill. Instead of putting 150,000 tons in there, we put 17,000 tons in there a year. What's that look like? This is the questions that need to be answered. Have different scenarios and come up with the answers of what this all looks like if we do it this way, if we do it that way. Because the operational side of that landfill, under this business platform in which it's being operated, is a total and complete failure. If it was privately owned, it would have went bankrupt years ago. But because it's government-owned, we have taxation powers. We have rate powers. And it's what has kept it alive. But it is a dead beast that we are just throwing good money at, and we need to see if there is a way to turn this curve, to make it a viable business for this city. And the only way we're going to do that is to start talking about it and ask some really stupid questions to get to the answers. But we need to look at, from full-blown, let's get the rates out there, get this thing filled up, close, blah, 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 debt paid off, blah, 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 to just a city-owned, city-personal landfill. We need to look at everything. Leave no stone unturned.
Well, you know, I kind of listened to everybody. I think, you know, maybe summed this up, but I think everybody's kind of got some good points. I mean, I think, you know, Mr. Mumpower's point of, you know, having the information, you know, we should all have some general, you know, after being here from anywhere, from, I think you're the least, Mr. Farnham, three years, of having these budget discussions, you should have some general sense. I may not know the exact number, but having talked about this, you know, more than once, you have some sense of the finances and where the issues are. But I think having that brought together maybe in a concise way is good as a review. It's also good for the public to kind of hear that and understand the framework that then we take our decisions. You know, I think, and you're right, Mr. Wingard, I mean, when you think of this, it's the debt and the liabilities is what is making that landfill the problem it is. And, you know, those were, have never been addressed. You know, if you're sitting here thinking, it's kind of like, I think we're about halfway through the life of this. Is that about somewhere?
Roughly, yeah.
So it's like halftime. You know, we need to kind of reassess where we're at and try to come out with a plan for the second half, you know. And I have no problem with that, but I think we need to, as we get that information, think about what the questions are and that we're asking good questions. And asking questions to allow city managers, CFO, the staff up there to get the answers we need to make a good decision, to ask the experts. And so there's some time in that as well, between when we ask the question and when we can get the answer, and then to digest it and think through that. You know, one thing, and you were kind of talking about this a little, about the haulers and different things. I know the last time we looked at rates, and you kind of got to this, I don't think you did, but is a breakdown in terms of fixed cost and variable costs, that would be extremely helpful in any kind of analysis of, you know, what's it cost. Because there are certain costs at that landfill. You just, as long as it's open, you cannot eliminate. I mean, it's a fixed cost. There's variable costs then that, you know, will change. And then, you know, I think, you know, collections and disposal are two different things. They're related, but yet, you know, we're still going to have collections, and that's something that we might look at as well. I know we've talked about that before, maybe ways, if it comes to rates, how you structure that, what we're collecting, what we're charging, again, to provide the services. But, you know, I think as we go through this, you know, if we talk about it every meeting, and I think you had that one Saturday meeting, which was in March, you know, maybe if you provide the information, we can digest it, you can ask questions. Then when we have a bigger block of time, that's when we can really sit down and start. Because that would give, I think, us some basic information, maybe ask some more questions. And then, you know, as we move through this process, that would probably be the best block of time to really sit down and kind of look at and discuss the various options and see what's there. I mean, that's from what I'm hearing and from our previous discussion about the budget, I guess, where we would be.
We see, I mean, it's, who knows what questions to ask? Really? Who knows what questions to ask?
Well, I think that's a good point, because...
And here is my first question. Every ratepayer in this city is paying $396 a year to have their trash picked up. And all numbers indicate that that trash can that these ratepayers have out in front of their house is only averaging $1,000. of their house is only averaging 1,000 pounds of trash a year. We've got 17,000, I mean, 7,000 cans out there, 7,000 pounds going into the landfill that is city. So every trash can out there, they're paying $396 for that 1,000 pounds. We get the benefit of the city coming in front of our house and picking it up. That's, that's worth something. We don't have to take it to the landfill. But my question is, is it fair to charge our taxpayers that's invested in this city, that owns real estate, that works here, that's raised their kids here, that's made a decision to stay here and call this place home? Is it fair to charge them $396 a year for one ton when we're letting semi trucks cross that scale for $19 for the same ton?
I mean, and that's why we need to look, I think, collection and disposal, you know, that, I think, the question you raised is a good one, but, you know, you're talking, the trucks that are going across the scale, that's already been collected, the, what the rate payers are paying for, that's collection, picking up the trash as well as disposing of it. That's why those need to be looked at separately, because, and it's more than trash, they're picking up your leaves, your grass clippings, there's a lot of things in service, and that's why I think we had a sense of those, because I know the last time we talked about looking at that, I had people that, you know, have a small enough, you know, like, basically one woman, and I don't know where she lives, she has no trees in her yard. She's like, I'm paying for them to pick up leaves, I don't even have leaves, you know, there's no trees here. So, you know, if you charge, break it down by service, some people, they might not, they may have trees in their yard, they may want to compost their leaves or whatever. So, you know, they're paying for a service they're not using, some people are using it. And I think there's where you can get it what, what is fair, in terms of the people that are using the service are paying for it. But there's a lot more than just what's going across the scale and what people are paying for.
Oh, I understand that, but this, this is a question here, and I understand. It is worth something. There is a dollar value to have these city trucks pull up in front of your house and pick that can up and put it in their truck and take it to the landfill where you don't have to. There's a dollar value there. But still, the fact remains that these numbers are so far apart from each other, you got to ask why? Why are we allowing this to happen? And on top of, here is another real kicker. On top of this $396 a year annually, the taxpayers are still subsidizing that landfill with the liner to allow these haulers to keep bringing it in at the volume they're bringing it in, at the cut rate that they're bringing it in. So not only are the taxpayers, well, I'm going to say rate payers, because this is a service, the rate payer paying nine, uh, 396, the taxpayers are still stepping up at a tune of over $500,000 a year to keep the liner going.
And I need to correct that, because I think my brain went numb this morning when we were talking about it. It seems like the year 2020 didn't exist. Actually, this past year, we only transferred $106,000 to the general fund instead of the 567,000 that I had mentioned earlier. That's what we had done for the previous two years was 567. Now, there's also a line item in there of roughly $406,000 where the city is paying the tipping cost as it goes across that floor.
Yeah, but it seems like, and, and, you know, I'm getting older and every day, you know, I'm losing brain cells like crazy, so my memory's not what it used to be. But it seems like last year's budget too, we also done a transfer of some money for the liner. We did not?
No.
Because I remember something about the liner coming up.
Well, let Mr. Farnham speak to that.
I will tell you, last year, the liner that was purchased, and I know there's a lot of negative about the solid waste disposal fund, a lot of negative items to discuss, but last year was the first year that I'm aware of, that the city actually didn't issue any new debt to buy a liner. The plan that we began three years ago actually worked last year. Now, it was the beginning, it was just the beginning, but no, the liner was paid for last year, and we did a couple of different things. We purchased less liner, and we used some of the previous debt proceeds that had not been expended for the liner one whole cycle ago, and we accrued money, and we put it in the budget and we paid for the rest of it. So that, that is significant, that we were, that the city was able to do that. And it, it was made up of a bunch of different things.
Yeah, okay, okay. Yeah, I remember there was something in our budget that we put money aside for a liner.
Yeah, we didn't, we didn't take it from the general fund, though.
No, we, we planned on it.
Right.
We budgeted it, okay? But still, it's taxpayer money that we budgeted.
Well, it was rate payer money.
Rate payer money, okay. But anyway, that's why it's down at the 100 and whatever thousand for last year. But typically, it's a half a million dollars. That's the number that you would throw out there.
I just want to say one more thing, and, and a piece of how that transfer has changed from 500,000 down to the 100,000 in the current budget, is as we've refinanced debt and any of that debt that belonged to the solid waste disposal fund, what we did was automatically recoup that savings by reducing the transfer. So that's how the transfer got pretty quickly, if you think about it, from 500,000 down to around 100,000 in the current year, was through refinance savings so, so not, so less cash had to be transferred. That's a good thing, too.
So while, while we're on that topic, while I'm thinking about it, you know, when you do go over the general requirements of the landfill, we do need to educate everybody on it, it is an enterprise fund, right? And so make sure you bring to the table, you know, what the state expects, you know, how, how municipalities should treat an enterprise fund, right? We shouldn't be subsidizing an enterprise fund out of the general fund, you know, there's... So let's make sure we understand the legality, what state law says, you know, that, because whether it's a dollar, or 100,000, or 200,000, or 500,000, right? It's supposed to break even. You know, it's an enterprise fund, it's supposed to bring in the revenues to cover the costs. And just educate everybody on that when you go over that general requirement.
Well, and I think if you all recall, ever since October 17, spring of 18, spring of 19, even last year, I have a definition of an enterprise fund up in my solid waste disposal fund presentation. So this is not something new. An enterprise fund is supposed to support itself, and it hasn't.
And we need to fix it.
There was a $20 million write-off several years ago, because it didn't support itself simply because the city kept putting money into that, and the landfill could not pay that back. I've preached it every year, and I'll preach it again. You all don't like hearing some of the things I have to say in regards to that landfill, but it has to support itself. To support itself, it may cost more, we may have to charge more, and we may have to do things differently. But out of this entire discussion tonight, I think there's one key question that no one has thought of, and no one has really said. We've talked about a lot of different things, and I think I know what the answer is. But the question is, that no one's narrowed down, because we've talked about a lot. What problem do we want to solve?
That is where we need to get together, because there are so many problems up there, I don't think that there is one blanket that is going to solve every problem up there.
And I agree, and I think we've got to prioritize our problems, and we start chipping away, it's like eating an elephant, you eat it one bite at a time.
It's funny you say that, because, you know, in manufacturing, you know, when we go into solving big, complex problems, right, you, you start pulling the, the whole Six Sigma technique in, right? There's a process called A3. It's A3 root cause analysis. And what do you think the very first block is, the very top?
What part, what's the problem?
Definition. What's the definition of what we're after to solve? That's the very first thing you fill out. And then you put background. What's the background of this problem? What do we know? That's getting all this data, right? And, and you keep drilling down, and it teaches you to ask why five times, right? So do we have a material problem up there?
A what, material?
Material. Why? Or do we have a people problem? Or is it a process problem? You see, the problems up there are broken into separate categories, right? So you start asking why, five times minimum, and if you keep asking why over and over again, you know what it drills down to? The actual answer. People, people are too reluctant to stop too soon when they, when they start asking questions. So when Ms. Marnie gets up here and talks about the devil's in the details and people laugh, this is one of those problems. The devil's in the details of this problem. We have got to ask why more probably than five times, and keep drilling down into the details till we, till we're exhausted of our questions, because it's going to show us the answer, I promise you. And I'll tell you, you know, over 35 years, and I'm not throwing this at anybody in this room, but I've never seen a single consultant come into a building that the people that understood that business, that were sitting there and living it every day, couldn't solve. I've never seen a single consultant answer a question that the people in the room on staff couldn't answer. It's happened over and over and over again. So you can't underestimate the knowledge that we got from the staff, to the operators, to the people in this room, to the community. And I think you got to exhaust that expertise as you go through this. And then out of that, something's going to come up and go, you know what? We don't know anything about... Now, that's starting to raise a flag to where you might need to bring somebody in, right? We don't know anything about that topic. So I think you want to be careful just pulling experts in, because you can just throw good money after bad. But at some point, I will agree, and I've used them twice in my career, and one time it actually worked out. So they, they do provide value, but you should be very specific with it. You just, you know, you got to be very careful when you do it, right? To make sure you'll get what you want out of it. So devil's in the details, the state requirements on enterprise fund, and then let's, let's, let's see what experts we have in this community that can help solve this. We got a lot of engineers, a lot of retired technical folks. We got people that's been in business for a long time in this community, right? And the last thing I think we're forgetting is, who, who out in the state of Virginia or, or in the southeast US, who else has a rock quarry landfill?
If I'm not mistaken, there's only three in the nation.
Okay. So why don't we get a Zoom or, or something going to where we can have a discussion with others like us that have, have had a landfill and see what they've done, or see if they've had similar problems, or maybe they've come up with some solutions that we haven't thought of, but at least it, it gives us a perspective, right, of other people that's got the same kind of landfill. What can we learn out of that, right?
Well, let me just pull the layers of this onion back, because I've heard plenty tonight that gets us on a path to nowhere. The reason we're having this discussion tonight is because we've got $34 million in debt associated with that landfill.
Exactly.
That's the whole reason we're sitting here tonight, talking about this, now running on about 45 minutes. It has nothing to do, and, and I'm not saying that there are things that can't be improved upon, don't take this that way. The operations of that landfill are about as lean as we can get them. We're out there working, I think there's a staff of eight, is that right? A staff of eight operating that landfill. And you're looking at roughly, I think it's about 200 acres. So you've got a staff of eight operating a landfill that's taking in roughly 140,000 tons of trash a year. The collection division, they have, I think, six drivers, is that right? Six collection? That are picking up trash from roughly 7,000 residents on a daily basis. It's not an operational problem. It's not a, you know, it's not, this is not something that we've got to find. The problem, guys, is we got $34 million in debt. And the problem is, how do we pay for it?
Well, I think you got two problems, I'll agree and disagree with what you said. One is, what we're talking about is a path to stop the debt from, from continuing to incur, so we don't add to what we've already got.
We're not incurring any more debt.
I'm saying, we've already got debt, it's a sunk cost.
Right, it's a sunk cost.
It's a sunk cost, so that's a kind of a separate topic. We had sunk costs sitting here, what are we going to do to pay it?
Right.
But then we got this landfill that we've done nothing to turn necessarily that entire water spigot of debt off either. So how much are we adding to that over, say, the next five years or 10 years? Is it zero?
Zero.
Oh, yeah? Well, then why are we subsidizing?
That, that, that's not adding debt, though, okay?
We have to be adding debt, it's not breaking even.
The reason we're subsidizing is, this landfill never charged what should have been charged from the get-go on commercial haulers or residents, and that's why we have $34 million in debt.
The point is, we're not breaking even. So if you don't break even, at some point, at some point, you're creating debt. You're not keeping up with the expenses.
I get that. And there, the problem is, we've gone through this. You asked me to go back to 1998. I did. In 1998, I think they were charging $2 for residential waste pickup. I have no idea what the commercial haul was charging at that time, we couldn't find that data. But just based on the amount that was written off, they weren't charging enough. The problem is, I've got several competing landfills around here that are charging 15 to $20 a ton to accept people's trash. If you don't have the revenue, you can't take care of the debt.
Can I jump in for just a second? So I think maybe what we should look at first is, is the debt, right? So what I would maybe like to see, when we come back with all these things that we've piled onto you, are you familiar with if-then statements from like, high school math? If this, then that?
Right.
So could you do something where it says, if we raise the rate on commercial haulers, we assume we'll lose this many, then we'll need this much money?
We've done that.
Can, can you show all that and say, if we follow path A, this happens, if we follow path B, if we raise the rates, this happens, if we fill it up super fast, if we fill it up over 200 years? Can you, can you show that?
I've got that spreadsheet. I've got a spreadsheet that shows you how we take care of that landfill in 7.22 years. Not only does that spreadsheet show us how to take care of it, it would show, and, and by no stretch of the imagination, am I CPA? I'm not qualified to be a CPA. But it appears, based on my rudimentary math skills, that there would be a positive result after 7.22 years financially on that landfill, if, if you could get the waste in from other parts of the country and charge a higher rate, okay? So we've seen a specific example of if you attempt to charge a customer more, what happens? They go directly to a different landfill that charges less. Mr. Wengard, we sat up there in my whiteboard, I asked you, if I were going to charge you $15, and there was a, and the landfill's where it sits, and another place was charging you $15, where would you go? You said you'd go to the Bristol landfill. I said, okay. If I said I'm charging you $17, and the other place is charging you $15, your response was, well, I'd have to see how much times I wanted to get me to, to go there, is it worth it to pay an extra $2 more? I think you said, I would prefer to pay $2 more. Then I'd take that, add that amount up to around $25, I think. At that time, you said you would go to a cheaper place. And that's the same thing that happens every time we attempt to raise the rates here. People make a cost benefit analysis of whether or not it's worth saving $10. And that's exactly what happens.
And that only stands to reason. We got to look at... The debt is nothing we can do anything about.
Right.
It's our baby. We own it. We got to deal with it. Now, the other issue is, is it fair to charge what we're charging for a can and letting haulers cross the scales at the rate that they're hauling? Now, if we go to raise it, we know they're leaving, okay? So is there an avenue to where we can give the taxpayer a break and the rate payer an increase on the can and do completely away with the haulers? And my scenario is, our real estate taxes, well, let me just say this, our real estate taxes are too high for this area.
I don't think there's anybody in this room that disagrees with that.
Everybody agrees with that. Our taxes in this city are higher on meals. Our taxes in this city are higher on meals. But yet, we still eat over here, instead of running to Tennessee. We are asking our people to step up above and beyond on their share of taxes, revenues, and ratepaying than we should be asking them. We need to put our heads together and say, okay, it's an enterprise fund up there at the landfill. By law, by definition, it is supposed to be standing on its own feet, okay? But it's not. It's still being subsidized. And we're paying an astronomical fee for our people to be able to have that service, but yet, we're letting people come around from all over the place, crossing the scales at a fraction of the price. That's wrong. We need to fix that. We need to figure out a way to fix that.
If I could jump in on...
I'm not finished yet.
Go ahead.
Now, if we take our real estate taxes, and we get them down to an average that is where it should be, give our real estate properties a break? And raise the rates on the trash can to where we make no more money? I'm going to use a simple scenario. Let's say, a Coke and a candy bar is a dollar. It's not. But let's just say, you can go buy a Coke and a candy bar for a dollar. Let's say the Coke is 55 cents, the candy bar is 45 cents. Does it really matter, in the end, if both of those items cost you a dollar? We can take the Coke down from 55 cents to 50 cents, and raise the candy bar from 45 to 50 cents, and you still get your Coke and candy bar for a dollar? We need to adjust our real estate taxes to offset the increase on the trash collection fees, to where that enterprise fund is now profitable. It's not being subsidized by taxpayer money. It's being paid for by ratepayer money, the way it is supposed to be. And let's give the homeowners a break to offset it. That is a scenario. That is something we can do. But will we? I don't know. We need to talk about that. But we need to figure out what we can do to get this landfill under control? And get it standing on its own feet without the people, the ratepayer, taking the blunt of this? It is not fair for these ratepayers to be subsidizing this landfill, paying $33 a month, $396 a year, and letting commercial haulers cross that scale for $19 a ton. I'm sorry, that's not fair. We need to fix it. And if we put our heads together, we can fix this. But we need to keep talking about it. And it's going to get ugly. It's not pretty. It's a stinking landfill. And it's going to get ugly. But we need to look at every option, and throw out all kinds of stupid, crazy ideas, and see what sticks, and what we can run with, and what we can and cannot do. But that is an avenue. That's an option. We're local government. We can set the rate on housing. The landfill's an enterprise fund. It can raise its rates. But we need to be fair, and open, and honest to the people. And they need to know that we've got a pig, and pigs stink, and this is not going to be pretty wrestling this thing, and getting it under control. But we're never going to get there if we don't keep talking about it, keep throwing out scenarios. We can't do anything with the debt. But we can do something about the ratepayers. We can do something about our taxes. We can do something about our service that is being picked up in our front yards. It is worth something to us. It's worth more than the haulers crossing for $19 a ton. I understand that. But it needs to be healthy, it needs to be fair, and the people need to know exactly what's going on, and why. It's nobody's fault in this room that's got us where we're at with this landfill. But it is our fault that we're not doing our due diligence to fix it and make it better. Now, that does fall on us.
So I just want to get ahead of something real quick. I will say that I don't think anybody here disagrees. I want to cut real estate taxes this year, and next year, a year after that, until they're back to a place where they should be. I'll say that. As far as following that line of thinking to its logical conclusion, you started talking about it, and then we went back to it. If we lose the commercial ratepayers, residents will pay more. Residents will pay significantly more than what they're paying now at 33. I don't want to pay 60, I don't want to pay 80. But they'll pay a lot more if we're only taking city trash. The landfill will last a whole lot longer. And I think we can, you know, the last thing we want, you know, over the last few months, we've heard all these people with smell problems, we don't want this landfill to last 150 years or 200 years, as has been suggested in this chamber previously.
Yep.
So I don't think that's what we want. And raise your hand if you want to. Ask those people if they want a 200-year landfill. That's not the way we should be going. So, it's my opinion. And it might be theirs, too. So I think we can... Do you have something else? Are you good? I think we've talked about it till we're blue in the face at this point, so if you could give us these answers that we've requested, I think that we could move on from this tonight. Because we're not getting anywhere, in my mind, because...
Well, I'm sorry you feel that way. You have a right to feel the way you do, and have your opinions. But when you say that the people don't want a 150-year landfill, that's your opinion? You can't speak for nobody but yourself unless they personally tell you that.
Excuse, let me clarify then. I will say personally, I don't want to pay $80 a month for trash, which is roughly 60 to 80 what we'd be paying if it was citizens-only trash. And I don't want my great-great-great-grandchildren having a 150-year-old landfill full of garbage that we don't know the environmental consequences of having that garbage open and degrading for over a century.
Well, let me ask, let me tell you this. If you're going to raise your kids here, and your kids are going to have kids here, and then their kids are going to have kids here, guess what? They're going to have a 150-year-old dump up there, because it ain't going nowhere.
It won't be open.
It don't matter. It's still there.
It's still there, but if it's sealed off...
It's not going anywhere.
I know it's not going anywhere. But if it's sealed off, as we've seen with, I don't want to do this with you, with different studies, if the landfills are closed, they have less environmental impact than if they're open, a big pit of garbage. And I don't think you can disagree with me on that. If you want to, you can Google it. But a closed landfill is less impactful, I guess, to the environment than an open landfill that's been there for 100 years.
Well, I'm not going to argue that, because I've never read any research on it. But no landfill at all is even better not to have in your own backyard. But unfortunately, we have a landfill in our backyard.
We've got a couple.
Yes, we do. So they're not going nowhere.
They're not going anywhere, but they don't need to be open for two more centuries.
And there's no reason to close it right now immediately, and write a check for $30 million, neither. There has to be a happy medium.
Yeah, but I just don't think the happy medium is over-doubling the rate that our people are already paying. As you've said, the tax rate is high, the real estate tax is high, our meal tax is kind of high. They don't need to be, what, it's $400 right now basically, per year for trash? I could guess that no one in here wants to pay $800 a year for trash, or $700 a year for trash pickup.
Okay.
Again, call me crazy, I haven't asked every one of them, but I don't think they do.
Okay, that's a number I've never heard before. Because the highest number I've ever heard from Mr. Eads is $55.
That's probably the highest number you've heard from me, probably. If I'm not mistaken, the engineers, when they were here in the spring of 19, I want to say that number was a little north of $60 a month, if you went to a city-only landfill, if I'm not mistaken. And Ms. Bradlin has a better memory than I do.
I believe we stopped, Mr. Eads, when we were doing the 50-some-dollar calculation. We actually stopped, because we felt like that was not something that...
I do remember that now.
That we were really going to go forward with. But you're right about the engineer, that cost was in the 60s.
So if we just do 60, that's $720 a year that you'd be paying for trash pickup. And I, again, I've not asked every person in this room, or every person in the city. I don't know that many people that want to almost double their trash pickup.
Well, I understand that. But just because somebody said that's the price, does not make that correct.
Well, that goes back to the...
We have to break that down. Because who controls the non-fixed to that landfill?
We have a certain amount of fixed cost, as the mayor said an hour and a half ago, or however long we've been doing this. We have a certain amount of fixed cost related to the operation of the landfill that we can't get around.
Exactly.
You know, and that's the people who go out and pick up the trash every year, and paying...
But there are things that we have control over.
There are.
And we need to talk about what we have control over, and what is the best avenue to deal with it. Now, I understand your patience are short, and you get tired of talking about a subject matter for what you feel like is an unreasonable amount of time. But unfortunately, this is not going away, and we're going to talk about this quite often going forward.
Well, I understand that. We've talked about your specific idea off and on for two years, and the numbers never add up. It's fuzzy math that you're doing, and I don't know where you're getting the numbers from. They don't add up in a way that is conducive to helping the people who live in this city, which should be our stated goal.
Well, guys, I think we had a really good discussion tonight. I think it was really productive.
Where have you been?
And I think we know where we're going with this.
He just threw the really flag.
We've got a good start, so...
All right.
All right.
So, does anybody have anything else to add? Because I do want to ask you one question before we leave. I think it's a good way to wrap this up. We've talked about a lot of different things. What, we're going to meet in two more weeks, a regular council meeting. This is going to be an item on the agenda. We need to have some kind of framework for that, and not just have an open-ended discussion. We've had that tonight. That's a good place to start. I think you have a sense of some of the questions we have, some of the issues we need. But if we're really going to make progress, we need to know what we're... We need to be prepared.
Sure.
And we need to know what we're going to discuss. And I think, as has been said, you do this, you know, how do you eat an elephant, a bite at a time? We take a little bite. And so, what are you planning to bring to us at the next meeting?
Well, I think the easiest thing, not only for council and for the public, is by next Tuesday, not a council meeting Tuesday, but just a normal Tuesday, I'm going to present you all with a breakdown of a general description of that landfill. How many acres is up at the landfill? What's, certain acres will be used for what? What type of operations are we doing up there? And how much is left in that landfill? How much time, based on our estimates, ranges anywhere from 23 to about 27 years, is left to get that landfill to completion? So, I will have that available. I will have a list of the equipment that we have up there, available to you all by next Tuesday. Not only will I provide that to you all next Tuesday, I will also put that on the website, so that the public has an opportunity to look at it. Because I think it's important that what I give you, I'm also going to give the public.
Agreed.
And, so you'll have that breakdown by Tuesday. I think going forward, based on what I've heard tonight, I don't think we want to start reviewing the collection and disposal piece of the landfill quite yet. I think we need to kind of continue to go through our budget process, and we will get there. And that will kind of be part of our budget discussion that we have every year. And we can get there. But I think the overture of tonight's comments have been, what do we do? So I think we proposed several, three to four options. And none of those options may be the solution, but I think it's options that we need to start discussing. One, do we want to close the landfill as quickly as possible? Two, do we want to keep it open as long as possible? Three, do we want to stay at the current rate, maybe increase a little bit, based on discussions I've had with our consultants? I think we can do a little bit of increase, and close it a little bit sooner than the 23 years. And what would that look like? So I think that's kind of where we need to go at that next meeting, two weeks from tonight. And then we just have a discussion about those options, because ultimately, this is a financial issue. It's a $34 million issue that we need to solve. And how do we solve it? So I think we have to, one, narrow down, what option do we want to take? Because we can't tackle all options at one time. We have to set a clear path, follow that path, and tweak that path as necessary as we go through this process. And we may start down one path and realize this is not the path we want to go. And then we have to go another route. But I think we at least need to start looking at what are reasonable options to move forward with the landfill. So unless someone sees something different, I think that's where I want to go in two weeks. Provide you all three or four options, and what the big-picture numbers look like. It's not going to be accurate, I can promise you that. We'll try to get it as accurate as possible. But those numbers are going to be from the 50,000-foot view of what things would look like if we take certain routes.
All right. That, to me, sounds fair. And I think it gives us an expectation. It's a good way to move forward. It's a good way to start, so...
And in closing, I will say this on that subject matter. Also, the answers to this landfill may not be in the near future, within a year or so. We may not find the answer. But here's the thing. It was brought up by a councilman tonight. Do you want to pay $80 to have your trash picked up in front of your house? Well, guess what a scenario would be? And I'm just, I'm going to throw mud out there. I don't care.
Quote, commercial...
I'm going to throw stuff out there, and we're going to see if it sticks. Because if things go to plan with the casino, then we could have an $80, $100 trash pickup, and a 50-cent real estate tax per hundred. Now, who wouldn't want that?
I think we want to move on from the debate. But I mean, I don't know that I'd want to add $80 or $100 to my electric bill every month. But that's just me, again.
Well, you're just one person.
Okay.
Well, and again, I think that's why it's important that the public that's here, but Mr. Eads, putting that information out on the website, so people can look, and knows that, you know, that seem to think that people in the community that have a vested interest can let us know if they have any prior experience that might be helpful, they can let us know as well. But, you know, as we go through this process, we need to hear from the community. I think that always helps in making a good decision. And, you know, like I say, you know, that 50,000-foot view of what the landfill is, we should all have some grasp of that by now. I don't know the general public does. But that's a good place to start, so... All right. With that, we will move to the consent agenda. What is the pleasure of council?
A move to approve is presented.
Okay.
Second.
All right. We have a motion by Councilman Osborne, and a second by Vice Mayor Farnum. Clerk, call the roll.
Farnum?
Yes.
Mopauer?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Wingard?
Yes.
Hartley?
Yes.
All right.